Good afternoon and welcome to the National Capital Planning Commission's February 3rd, 2022 public meeting. Ms. Costa, would you please take the role?
Thank you. Commissioner Steingasser.
Present.
Commissioner McMahon.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner May.
I am here.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
I am here as well.
Thank you. Chair White.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon. Thank you. Not here yet. Commissioner Cash.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Here.
And Commissioner Ginsburg.
Here.
Thank you. Marcel Acosta, the Executive Director, Anne Schuyler, the General Counsel, and Diane Sullivan, Director of the Urban Design and Plan Review Division, are also in the meeting.
Thank you. Noting the presence of a quorum, I would like to call this meeting to order. Today, it will be streamed and will be available in a few days as a video on NCPC's website. If there is no objection, the agenda as posted is adopted as the order of business. Now, we will play a short video clip of the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would also like to take a moment and pause for a moment of silence for all of those affected by COVID-19 in our nation and around our world. In response to the COVID-19 guidelines on public gatherings, NCPC will conduct its meetings online until circumstances change. I want to share how we will be conducting our commission business. Votes by the commission will be conducted by roll call. When commissioners wish to be recognized, they should unmute, turn on their webcams, and request to be recognized. During commission deliberations, I will use a round robin format to ask each commissioner if they have any comments. During deliberations, all commissioners should be on video during that time, unless you are experiencing technical difficulties. When you wish to put forward a motion, a second, or an amendment, please unmute, identify yourself, and make the motion. Next is Agenda Item 2, which is the Report of the Chair. And I want to say I was honored and delighted to participate in the Beyond Granite Online Kickoff on January 20th. This inspiring event brought together collaborating agencies and steering committee members to learn more about the initiative and hear from leading scholars, practitioners, and other experts on the complex issues shaping national commemoration. And I am so pleased that NCPC is one of them. Over the past month, I had the wonderful opportunity to meet with Catherine Townsend and Teresa Durkin with the Trust for the National Mall to discuss this initiative further, and I am really looking forward to our continuing partnership with them on Beyond Granite. I also met with Deborah Rutter, Executive Director of the Kennedy Center, and Billy Sin, Chair of the Commission of Fine Arts, to discuss areas of mutual interest. Please note that I have called a special commission here session on February 16th at 10:00 a.m. This session will be used to hear an important information presentation on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative, and we will also have a chance to learn how we're going to use Zoom as our online platform going forward and how it will affect our meetings. We hope it will make it much more user-friendly for folks to participate online with our public meetings. For Agenda Item 3, we have the report of our Executive Director, Mr. Acosta.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon. As the Chair noted, we will host a special commission meeting on February 16th at 10:00 a.m. to present the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative Concept Alternatives. As such, we will also be transitioning to the Zoom platform at this meeting, so please contact Secretary Costa if you have any questions or need assistance with the transition. Further information regarding the Pennsylvania Avenue presentation will be made available to the public on our website in the coming days. We also released NCPC's 2021 Year in Review, a look back at our previous year's accomplishments and a preview of this year's efforts. The redesigned Annual Report explores how agency initiatives advance the administration's sustainability, equity, and innovation goals last year. Many thanks to our Office of Public Engagement staff for their good work. The report is also available on our website at ncpc.gov. If you have a copy of my written report, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Acosta, and congratulations on everything listed in the Annual Report. It is an impressive body of work and well-presented, so thank you.
To the staff.
Absolutely. Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Acosta? Hearing none, we will move to Agenda Item 4, which is the Legislative Update. Ms. Schuyler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have some things to report. The first are two bills, one's H.R. 6353 and S. 3438. These are companion bills, both entitled National Service Animals Memorial Act. The two bills establish, authorizes the National Service Animals Monument Corporation to establish a commemorative work on federal land in the District of Columbia to commemorate the heroic deeds and sacrifices of service animals and handlers of service animals in the United States. Both bills were introduced in early January, and both provide that the establishment of the commemorative work must be in accordance with the Commemorative Works Act. The second item I would like to report upon is H.R. 6201, which is entitled the National Liberty Memorial Preservation Act. This bill extends the authority in D.C. until September 30th, 2027, to establish a memorial in Area 1 or Area 2, but not in the Reserve, to honor the more than 5,000 courageous slaves and free black men, black persons, excuse me, who served as soldiers and sailors or provided civilian assistance during the American Revolution. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Schuyler. Does the commission have any questions? Hearing none, Agenda Item 5 is the Consent Calendar. There are three consent calendar items on this month's agenda. The first is for final approval of the Wolf Trap National Park for the Performing Arts General Management Plan Amendment submitted by the National Park Service. The second item is for preliminary site and building plan approval for Concession Stand A at the Wolf Trap National Park for the Performing Arts in Vienna, Virginia, also submitted by the National Park Service. The last item is for approval of comments on concept plans for the new Fort Dupont Ice Arena located in southeast Washington, D.C. and submitted by the D.C. Department of General Services. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Steingasser. Is there a second?
Second.
Hi. I think I'll take Commissioner May's second. Ms. Costa, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Thank you. The motion was made by Commissioner Steingasser and the second by Commissioner May. And with that, Commissioner Steingasser.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Commissioner McMahon.
Yes.
Commissioner May.
Yes.
Commissioner Argo.
Yes.
Chair White.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Checking Commissioner. We've almost arrived. Commissioner Dixon, just checking to see if he has joined us. No, all right. Commissioner Cash.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Abstain.
Thank you. And Commissioner Ginsburg.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion is carried. First on the open session is Agenda Item 6A, Approval of the Final Master Plan for Joint Base Anacostia Bowling. And today, we're going to hear from Mr. Wild. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. Let me get it up on the screen. Okay. Can you see my presentation and hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the commission. The United States Air Force has submitted the JBAB Installation Development Framework Plan, the Bowling District Plan, and Transportation Management Plan for final approval today. Previously this past November, we commented on the draft versions of these plans, and the Air Force has since added some information to their final plans before us here today. And they will provide additional, more detailed information to our commission through future plans and guidance documents, which I will describe during my presentation. As a final plan review submission, we are considering how the applicant has responded to our previous comments and recommendations, taking into account the nature and intended purpose of the plans. And in this case, if the final submission provides enough guidance to inform additional more these submitted for future NCPC review. Joint Base Anacostia Bowling, or JBAB, is situated in southeast Washington, D.C. at the convergence of the Potomac and Anacostia Rivers in Ward 8, bordered by the Naval Research Laboratory to the south, the Frederick Douglass Memorial Bridge to the north, South Capitol Street 9295 to the east, and the Potomac and Anacostia Rivers along its west side. JBAB is located approximately 1 and 1/2 miles to the southeast of the U.S. Capitol Building and at the base of the Washington Topographic Bowl, just to the west of the Department of Homeland Security's St. Elizabeth Campus. JBAB currently has a maximum population of 17,000 military and civilian employees and families, hosting units that include the National Guard, Military Reserve, United States Coast Guard, and other federal agency personnel. Similar to a small city, the 966-acre installation has a wide range of land uses with approximately 1,000 privatized homes and a mix of other uses that include parks and open space, a commissary and base exchange, communications and air operations facilities, military barracks, child development centers, and administrative buildings. As a reminder, notable features at JBAB include its raised earthen levee-seawall system along the western river shoreline, with a recreational trail along its length and prominent views to the west looking toward downtown Washington, D.C. JBAB currently has three operational gates and a 28-mile internal roadway system that is comprised of primary, secondary, and local roadways. And a sizable portion of the installation currently resides within the 100- and 500-year floodplain areas, which includes part of the bowling district shown here in yellow. Here's a graphic from the final bowling district plan that shows future conceptual development within the district. And since several of these sites are located within the existing 500-year floodplain, we pre the Air Force would plan, design, and develop these areas to manage their risk of flooding in accordance with Executive Order 13690. Here's a list of planning topics that our commission previously commented on, including Executive Order 13690 compliance, future development locations, eco-friendly surface parking and landscape guidelines, new tree planting priority areas, and how the Air Force will attain its renewable energy goals for the installation. But first, I would like to provide some context for the current submission as the Air Force now has oversight responsibilities for JBAB, and the applicant is currently in the midst of a two-year effort to develop requisite plans, policies, and guidance documents for the installation per Air Force Governance Regulations. The Air Force planning process differs from many other federal installations where there is a single master plan with chapters that address each topic area, such as transportation, landscaping, land use, planning constraints, and other related topics. Rather, the Air Force process, which applies to all Air Force installations and now includes JBAB, consists of an initial broader-level framework plan, which we are reviewing here today, and then a series of follow-up separate district area and component plans with a single standards document. This slide helps illustrate the interconnected hierarchy between these Air Force plans. So here are the current Air Force plans that we are reviewing at today's commission meeting, the framework plan, a district plan, and a transportation management plan, and how they all fit together within the Air Force planning structure. Previously, our commission expressed support for the JBAB Installation Development Framework Plan Strategies and Goals, which included making efficient and effective use of limited land through infill development, consolidation of functions and appropriate facility siting, preserving development potential for future growth, adapting to and mitigating climate change and sea level rise, and honoring and communicating the historic significance of the installation. And these strategies and goals in the plan remain unchanged from their previous draft submission. Regarding future planning at JBAB, the Air Force will submit three other JBAB district plans to NCPC for review during the spring and summer of this year. And the Air Force will also submit their new JBAB Installation Facility Standards Document for NCPC review by the summer as well. Here is part of a typical table of contents taken from the Dover Air Force-Based Installation Facility Standards shown on the right, which helps illustrate the great level of detail that is provided through these types of documents, related to things like tree planting, landscaping, architectural and the Air Force uses a similar standards document for each of their installations nationwide. Finally, here are some more topic-specific component plans that the Air Force will develop for JBAB in the future to address things like energy and climate resiliency, and they plan to provide information from these and other JBAB component plans to NCPC for review in 2023. So for the remainder of my presentation, I will now go through how the Air Force has revised its final IDP framework, bowling and transportation management plans in light of our previous comments from November, and how they plan to provide additional, more detailed development guidance in the future, and why we are satisfied that the Air Force will continue to address our previous comments through their future plan submissions. Regarding Executive Order 13690, which pertains to federal development within the 100- and 500-year floodplains, the Air Force revised several sections of their IDP framework and district plans to specify their intent to comply with the new executive order, adding language to their constraint summaries, form-based planning, planning district summaries, and their preferred bowling district alternative sections. In addition, the Air Force has committed to improving JBAB's earthen levee to withstand higher flood events, to developing a future climate action and resiliency plan of order guidance into their Integrated Natural Resources Management Plan for JBAB. I would also like to note the Air Force's ongoing participation in a Metropolitan Washington Council of Government Study known as the Military Installation Resilience Review, which is tasked with identifying risks, hazards, and vulnerabilities to JBAB and other military installations within the district from flooding, energy insecurity, and aging infrastructure. And as shown here on this slide, we acknowledge JBAB's role in the COG study and recommend that the Air Force use the study to help benefit their future flood-related policies in the final Executive Director's recommendation at the end of my presentation. So staff finds the updates provided in the final Air Force submission in addition to the Levy Project, ongoing COG study, and scheduled Future Climate Action and Resiliency Plan for JBAB, that the commission's previous executive order request has been addressed, to the extent possible, through the current submission, given the broader nature of the framework and district plans. And the Air Force will continue to address our previous comments through its continuing installation planning process. In response to our recommendation to prioritize bowling district development on surface parking, which would remove capacity outside of the flood-risk area and help to preserve open space, the historic bowling plan now includes our recommendation as additional guidance to help develop future bowling district projects. Regarding our previous requests for eco-friendly surface parking and installation landscape guidelines, as the current submission includes broader-level documents per Air Force requirements, JBAB would provide those details through their Future Installation Facility Standards Document as exemplified by our previous IFS Table of Contents example slide. We note that the stated IFS purpose, which is to maintain efficient operations, reduce costs, reduce energy and water use, and establish consistent standards. And this sustainability focus will serve as a foundation for future green landscaping and parking design guidelines. And NCPC staff will continue to work with the Air Force to ensure that the commission's guidance is reflected in their forthcoming IFS document. Regarding tree priority planting areas, the IDP framework cites an installation-wide goal to increase tree canopy in multiple sections. And more specifically, the plan specifies the use of additional planting layers in areas where tree canopy increases are likely to occur. The IDP framework also includes language that describes JBAB's intent to establish park-like corridors to improve pedestrian, bicycle, and recreational connections with new tree plantings that illustrate the Air Force's intent to establish these improved streetscapes. So based on this broader level of content, staff is satisfied that the Air Force intends to increase trees on the installation, and we will continue to work with the applicant to ensure that additional tree placement guidance is provided through their future IFS document. The Air Force includes a strategy to establish development patterns and operational policies to encourage renewable energy projects within the Constraints section of the IDP, which is appropriate for its broader-level scope. And future details will be forthcoming through their Future Installation Energy Plan with information pertaining to current energy usage, trends and goals, and potential energy attainment alternatives. Separate from this review, the previous 2014 master plan identified a number of potential sites for future solar panel installations, which continue to remain relevant today. And I would also like to note JBAB's current 25-year power purchase agreement, which has resulted in several recent onsite solar panel installations, and their agreement continues to offer the possibility of future installations. So staff is satisfied that based on the Air Force's intent to develop an energy-focused component plan for JBAB, that the current IDP framework and bowling plans provide a good basis for developing that information in response to our previous draft review comments. The Air Force includes a number of strategies in the final IDP and bowling district plan that communicate their commitment to historic preservation and complying with Section 106 requirements. And this is all based on a foundational planning goal to preserve JBAB's heritage. The Air Force currently maintains a computerized database for the installation known as the ICRIMP that inventories JBAB's historic and cultural assets and features, serving as a useful planning tool to help identify potential adverse effects from future development during early project development phases. And finally, the Air Force communicates that they will undergo the Section 106 process for all of their future projects in consultation with the DC SHPO and NCPC. So staff is satisfied that the final JBAB submission expresses an appropriate level of commitment to cultural and historic features, and that the Air Force will reinforce the content of its broader IDP framework and bowling district plans with more detailed guidance through their forthcoming standards document. And this is an appropriate response to our previous commission comments. We note the Air Force's intent to comply with Section 106 for its future projects in the final Executive Director's recommendation, and we request their future coordination with the DC SHPO to discuss JBAB's historic structures, potential impacts to historic view sheds from future development, and architectural design compatibility with the Section 106 process. And finally, in reaction to our previous comments to coordinate with our federal and district planning partners, the final plans do reflect the Air Force's ongoing effort and commitment to coordination through proposed travel demand management partnerships with DDOT and St. Elizabeth's. Future consultations with the DC SHPO is previously noted, and NCPC, as they develop their future standards document and other future district and component plans. And here is a summary table that summarizes how the Air Force responded to our previous comments in their current submission, and how they will continue to respond through future planning and guidance documents over the next year and a half. Staff finds that the final submission does respond to previous commission comments within the context of its broader-level plans, and we find that there is sufficient guides within the IDP framework and bowling plan to inform the Air Force's future planning documents. And finally, we request to review these remaining plans and Installation Facility Standards when it's final Executive Director's recommendation. And here is a final slide that shows the Air Force's anticipated schedule for their IFS and additional plans, with their next district plan to be submitted to NCPC in the spring, and then two other district plans in their Installation Facility Standards Document available for our review by the summer. And then the Air Force expects to have the remaining component plans available for NCPC review during 2023. So with that, here's the Executive Director's recommendation, which is divided over the next two slides. However, I will not go through each point as I have already summarized the recommendation through my presentation. And with that, I would now like to introduce Colonel Logan, who serves as the JBAB commander and commander of the 11th Wing, and Ms. Cat Keller-Kratzer, who is the JBAB Deputy Base Engineer. And both will provide a brief statement on behalf of JBAB. And then the other installation planning staff will be available for questions and comments from the commission. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you, Madam and thank you to all of you for the opportunity, everyone's time and work and support, and a big thanks to my team. As was just presented, we're asking for the final NCPC approval of our IDP, our Installation Development Plan, one of four district plans, and our Transportation Management Plan. As was just briefed, but just to reiterate, Joint Base Anacostia Bowling experienced a lead service transfer from the Navy to the Air Force in October of 2020. And so during this time, from October of 2020 to October of 2022, we've been standing up our 11th Wing here at Joint Base Anacostia Bowling and preparing a variety of Air Force-based master planning documents. And those include the Installation Development Plan, four district plans, the Transportation Plan, the Installation Facility Standard, the Installation Energy Plan, and the Climate Resilience. And then in October of 2022, we will reach fully operational-capable for the Joint Base Anacostia Bowling being under Air Force lead, which will be very exciting. 11th Wing circulated all of these plans to our over 70 mission partners around JBAB, our Air Force leadership, and the 11th Wing leadership, and Ward 8. We are really just very proud of our relationships and engagements and partnerships around the region. We provided tours of the installation, as you all are tracking, for NCPC. I'm sorry I couldn't be present for those previous tours, but our Vice Commander, Colonel Robbie, was there. We did tours with GSA and DHS, highlighting many of the environmental-friendly programs that were just highlighted in the previous presentation, our solar panels, the existing and future multi-use trails, the Water Taxi Project, and our levee. Our team and I are extremely committed to environmental-friendly programs as we prepare for the future. We've incorporated the comments, as was just highlighted, for NCPC, GSA, DHS into this final version, and we're very excited for the future. We have ongoing relationships with DC SHPO, DOE through our 11th Civil Engineering Squadron Environmental Unit, and have engaged NCPC on several other JBAB projects over the last six months, which I think everyone's tracking, our Charter School, which we're very, very proud of, DIA landscaping plan, and our FAA antenna. So with that, I really just want to thank everyone for the partnership, the progress we've made, and we think we have some really great plans. And I also want to give a shout out to Ms. Linda Argo and your role with NCPC Commission. But more importantly for us, you're our LRS honorary commander, and we really rely on our honorary commanders and the involvement with the installation so much. So thank you, ma'am. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Cat, and she will further our remarks. Over.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Mr. Wild, for that presentation. It's been a wonderful working relationship, working with Mike over many years, but specifically on these planning documents. I'm just going to follow up with a couple of the comments that Mr. Wild made so everyone's tracking how the Air Force documents are laid out by our Air Force instruction, which follows DoD instruction, and how those plans work together. Seeing today the IDP, the Installation Development Plan, that's our 10,000-foot level plan, so that's way up in the sky. What does the base look like from above? It goes over land use constraints and opportunities. And then the district plans then nest into that, so we have four. We've completed one so far in our historic bowling town. We've completed one so far in our historic Bowling Town Center, which is the heart of JABAB in a lot of ways, especially of the Air Force missions. That's that 5,000-foot level, and that gets into where are our development opportunities? Where is that parcel level development so we can look forward to future projects as well as transportation opportunities and cost benefits? Both of those documents live on the Air Force Comprehensive Planning Platform, which is the dynamic live version of our planning documents. So we submit these on a five-year rotational basis, but we don't just put these on a shelf. Keep these documents alive. Those documents help inform all of the projects that we're doing, both major renovations as well as military construction. And we continue to submit those projects on a project review basis to NCPC. And then finally, the last document you're seeing today is that transportation management plan, which really overlays how all of these things are connected together. The two other documents that did not come before you today are the installation facility standards. We are currently working on those. That is more than just a planning document. That's also architectural standards, landscape standards, plantings, trees, signage, parking facilities, road classifications, site planning, even interiors and exteriors. So it gets into that. It also breaks it down by similar facilities around them. So for example, our historic districts, we will have standards specific to make sure that we're compatible with those historic areas. We are working on those right now. We're going to incorporate those tree planting standards and make sure we get some good native species worked in there. We'll have that document before NCPC as well. Once we get concurrence from our 70 mission partners, our Air Force leadership, as well as the wing commander. And that will also go through Section 106 coordination to make sure. The second document that I know will address a lot of the questions that have come up as part of this review is the installation energy plan. That's essentially a decision-making framework, more so than it is a planning document. So DOD has rolled these out recently to help us not only achieve energy goals, but also to ensure resiliency for energy and water, to make sure that our mission assurance is there. It works in tandem with the IDP, so it's great that the IDP is complete so that the documents can feed off one to the other and inform each other. We will continue to work that document. It's going to include energy-specific strategies for JABAB, such as power redundancy, storage, backup, alternative and renewable energies, specifically solar here on JABAB, energy management and control systems in our buildings, building envelope ceiling, HVAC, and lighting performance upgrades in our existing buildings, preventative maintenance, water conservation, and backup water supplies. As Mr. Wild has already demonstrated, JABAB is committed to alternative energy. We have one of the largest solar arrays in the District of Columbia. And that's good for the DOD as well as the Air Force because alternative energies really allow us to get that resiliency and redundancy in ways that traditional energy sources do not. That goes beyond just, you know, weather and planning and that kind of thing, but really looks at how do you keep the installation running well into the future? How do you protect those missions? Air Force at large is still working on exactly what that means. So that's going to be a moving document in a lot of ways as we get continued guidance from the Air Force on what that document should look like. So all of these documents will work together, and they will inform every project and change that we make on the installation. They'll cover development, transportation, sustainability, resilience, the Section 106 historic process, and our great relationship with DC SHPO. And we will also get into those architectural and landscape guidelines. We continue to reach out to Ward 8. We had a great meeting with them right around the holidays where we actually met several of the members of the community. We're looking forward to being able to get out there post-COVID and have some of these meetings in person like we used to before 2020. We're also continuing to work with DC SHPO on several projects. They were an excellent partner in getting us through the charter school process as well as DDOT was. We have excellent relationships with DOEE. They're on our base nearly every day, checking on how we're doing in terms of energy compliance. So just to wrap up, we do plan to present the remaining three district plans in the next year or so. And then as the IFS, the installation facility standards, and the energy plans become available, we'll also get those to the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wild, Colonel Logan, and Ms. Keller-Kratzer for the very comprehensive presentation. Much appreciated. And I understand that you and the other JABAB representatives are here to answer any questions. So do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Wild or the JABAB representatives? Hearing that, I will now open it up to the commission for discussion. I will start with Commissioner McMahon and then go in a round robin format using our normal seating order. So please keep your webcams on during the discussion. And Commissioner McMahon.
Thanks, Sherwood White. Good presentation. I appreciate the changes JABAB has made. I really also appreciate the time they took to walk us around and tour us around JABAB to see in person the kinds of things they were addressing with the new national plan. Other than that, no comments.
Thank you. Commissioner May.
So this is a very complex plan or set of plans. And it's hard to really understand and digest it all. But since we are arguing the framework plan here, the thing that I still feel is lacking in a way is some of the more aspirational goals that we discussed in the previous reviews. I was kind of hoping that we would see a more definitive statement. I mean, the way it's written, it sort of checks all the boxes. And you know, we're going to meet the executive order, and we're going to, there will be follow-up, more detailed guidelines and things like that. So everything is sort of there, but it's like the way it's being presented to us, and I assume that this is coming out of what the document is, it's like the bureaucracy of a federal planning operation have robbed the vision that could be here. Maybe the vision is there. It just doesn't feel like it. Now, it seems a little strange to say, "It doesn't feel like it's a good plan." It just feels like there could be more definitive statements of the aspiration to plant more trees, to improve the pedestrian experience, and so on. I mean, I think the most definitive statements have to do with renewable energy. That's probably the one that stands out among them all. So I mean, there's nothing in here for me to really object to, but there's just nothing in here for me to get excited about. And the campus itself is really an exciting place. The base is an exciting place. For its. I'm prepared to vote in favor, and I'm looking forward to further reviews where we will get into more of this, and hopefully the detail of it all will satisfy the need for a real vision and aspiration that I feel just is not apparent in the plan the way it is right now. So I mean, that's about it. I don't have any particular comments on what's being done. Again, I think they are checking all the right boxes. I just feel like it should be more than just that. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo.
Hi. Yes, I appreciate the shout out, recognizing my status as an honorary commander, which I've never been before. That's pretty exciting. I have a couple. I don't, I don't, I'm not completely aligning myself with Commissioner May's comments, but I appreciate the most of them in the spirit in which he's suggesting something that looks more aspirational, which I guess I wasn't necessarily expecting to be inspired by this plan, but I can see where he's coming from. I think the, I appreciate particularly the comments that indicate that they are working on a more robust and definitive climate resiliency plan. One of the things that I didn't hear anything about, or if I did, or if they did talk about it, I didn't hear it, anything about transportation. And one of the things, did I miss that? I don't know. But one of the things that we talked about when we, and I should say also how much I appreciated the opportunity to visit. I had been there before, but to visit the base and have the tour that we had, which I think was illustrative and informative in so many ways. Our commissioners will be happy to hear about the planned solar arrays as part of that climate resiliency plan. I'm really interested in seeing what the installation facility standards are going to look like, which I think will be of great interest to the commission. I think those are, those are my comments. I really appreciate the work that they're doing. Maybe it could be a little more aspirational to join with my colleague, but I certainly think that they're on the right track. And I encourage anybody who didn't get an opportunity to visit the installation that, when we had our visit and our tour, to do so. I think it's really, it's informative in a number of ways that doesn't translate easy to a PowerPoint presentation. Let's put it that way. Thank you.
So Commissioner and honorary commander Argo, would you want Mr. Wild to speak to the transportation elements? You said you didn't hear much. I wonder if we should take a moment and revisit that? Would that be helpful?
I don't think we need to take everybody else's time with that. Unless you think it's important, but I can do that on my own, you know, to go back. And I'll talk to, I'll talk to the staff and get a little more information on that. Well, I remember we talked a lot about it when we were taking the tour, about ways in which we saw opportunities for improvement on managing transportation and parking and also bicycles, you know, as an expanding opportunity. So thank you, though.
Oh, absolutely. And I know that the perspective is this overarching plan, and then each of the elements will be further developed.
Absolutely.
Maybe there's more to come that would answer those questions. So thank you very much. Commissioner Wright.
Well, I wanted to say thank you to the JABAB staff for accommodating GSA and DHS with a separate tour. I agree with Commissioner Argo. It was really important to see it. It's a real gem. There are some passages. You can't beat the location. Flood potential notwithstanding. Wow, what a location. And on-the-ground experiencing it was really brought that home. And so those are the nice things I have to say. I have to align myself with, unsurprisingly, with Commissioner May. But I think the word I would use is not so much that it falls short in aspiration, but the plan, to me, falls short in imagination and does feel a little bit like a box-checking enterprise. And I would say that as they approach the next stages of, you know, these manuals that they have to put together, go big or go home, because we all know what's going to happen in the government. We do design and planning by committee. And unless you start way out of the realm of what you think is possible in a good way, in an aspirational way, in an imaginative way, it's going to get watered down in the process. So reach further than you think you can attain. That's what I would say. There are, and take advantage of the fact that you have this exercise to do and correct some of the ham-fisted stuff that's been done over the years. Nobody's responsibility who's working on the plan now. But I was so struck by some lovely passages, lovely moments in the campus. And then at the very end, we were, I think it was at the, what I guess is referred to as the parade ground. And there's this huge mechanical plant that somebody decided to put right in front of a historic building, not 20. And I thought to myself, what a shame, because it obscures the, it's got to make space for the parade grounds, and it certainly detracts from a lovely building. Stuff like that, it was all over the campus. And again, it's not, this is a huge opportunity to undo some of the damage that has been wrought over the years by thoughtless, well, the lack of planning, where, you know, and again, a box-checking kind of thing. Well, we need to meet this need, and we need to meet this program, and this is the fastest, cheapest way to do it. So I wish you luck. I'm not going to vote against it. I would just advise, as we've seen in so many DOD installations, and I understand the constraints that are probably imposed by a very arcane bureaucracy. But no time like the present to try and buck the system a little bit and think with a great deal of imagination.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon.
I have no comments this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash.
Thanks so much. I want to thank you for the presentation. And again, thanks to JABAB for having us out there. I think it was really enlightening to be able to see the site with our own eyes and just to get a better sense. And I'd like to associate myself with Commissioner May and Commissioner Wright's comments that there's nothing in here that excites me, but I really hope that that imagination can really come through as the future plans come through. This is such a unique site. It's, I think, probably 2% of the district's footprint is this site. And it's better transportation networks, better walkability, better integration with the city. I think that looking at opportunities to make this feel more like a city within a city than a suburb within a city that it kind of feels like right now, I think that those kind of opportunities should be sought out and just to plan a better, just a better experience there so that the folks there don't have to rely on cars and driving around and all that. So I hope that as the planning goes forward, that we really recognize this for what it is, a fairly unique, very large military installation in the heart of a very dense urban area. So I'm not going to vote against or anything like that, but just tackle the others. I hope that there's a lot of imagination and good planning work that goes into the future documents that we'll be taking a look at.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis.
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate hearing about this. And like Commissioner Argo, really appreciated hearing about the climate resiliency pieces. And that's all I have for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Ginsburg.
No questions from me. Thank you for the presentation.
Commissioner Steingasser.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. It was actually very, very enlightening. I see, I see that my fellow commissioners have about the lack of aspiration. but I actually found the plan to be a good plan. And I found each element to have an opportunity as it moves, moves forward to be more and to give more, put more flesh on the bones, as they say. And I'm sorry I missed the tour of the base. The last time I was there was 1973 and I imagine it's very different now. But I found it to be a good plan and I will be voting for it. And I appreciate the work towards the sustainability, the resilience, and of course, the historic preservation and the coordination with the state Historic Preservation Office. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to add, and I agree with Commissioner Steingasser. I think you have a very solid base to work from. I think you've laid out all the elements that you'll be addressing further. And I think that the aspiration and imagination, you have set up the framework for that to flow. And so we're eager to hear how that comes forward. I also appreciate the comments from Colonel Logan about the commitment to the environment and recognizing that this is a very special spot. And we're eager to hear, as you work through the plan, how that comes forward. I also appreciate your recognition of Honorary Commander Argo. And I think that's a very imaginative way that you use to seek outside thinking. And if there's anyone who can help you think imaginatively and aspirationally about planning efforts, it's Commissioner Argo. So good for you for taking advantage of that expertise. So with that, I would ask, is there a motion to approve the final master plan? So moved. I think that was Commissioner Argo.
It was.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Steingasser seconded. Ms. Coster, can you please confirm the motion in the second and take the vote by roll call?
Yes, the motion was made by Commissioner Argo and seconded by Commissioner Steingasser. And with that, Commissioner Steingasser.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Epstein.
Thank you. Thank you. The motion is carried. And thanks again to all of our presenters. Next on the open session is Agenda Item 6B, Authorization to Release the Monumental Core Streetscape Design Guidelines for a 90-day public comment period. And we will be hearing from Ms. Delker.
Good afternoon, Chair White and members of the commission. NCPC is presenting the draft Monumental Core Streetscape Design Guidelines, Vertical and Surface Elements, and requesting authorization to release for a 90-day public comment period. The purpose of today's presentation is to provide a brief recap of the Monumental Core Streetscape project and to present the draft Streetscape Design Guidelines. We'll review the vertical element guidelines, including streetlights and trees, and surface element guidelines, including landscapes and plantings, stormwater management, pavements, and pedestrian circulation, and then discuss our current work and next steps to advanced guide and manual development. Now I'll provide a quick recap on the project background. The Streetscape Manual was first created in 1992 and consists of details and specifications that coordinate construction across federal and local jurisdictions and the National Mall and vicinity. Agencies both use the manual's details and hold regular working group meetings to coordinate Streetscape projects. And this is important for developing Streetscape consistency across jurisdictions as projects are implemented. Additionally, NCPC and CFA staff use the Streetscape Manual during project review to ensure projects use consistent elements. The current interagency working group includes 11 federal and local agencies listed on the left who signed a MOU to advance components of the Monumental Core Streetscape Project. These project components are being developed in close coordination with the working group and with input from agency experts such as arborists and lighting designers. The Monumental Core Streetscape Project is a multi-phased update of the 1992 Streetscape Manual and is led by NCPC. The project includes four components shown on the left. First, developing the urban design Streetscape framework and lighting policy. Second, developing Streetscape Design Guidelines. Third, updating the construction manual. And fourth, updating our working group MOU. These components will be packaged into a new Streetscape Guide and Manual to inform the future character and civic quality of Streetscapes and improve connections between the downtown Monumental Core and surrounding local areas. In November 2019, we received your comments on item number one, the Urban Design Streetscape Framework and Lighting Policy. The commission commented favorably and directed staff to use this as the basis to develop Streetscape Design Guidelines and any future updates to the Streetscape Construction Manual. To recap, this is the Urban Design Streetscape Framework, showing street categories including radiating and edging streets in bright pink, which are nationally and light pink, which are nationally and locally significant. This map also shows the Streetscape Guide and Manual boundary, which was expanded to add Banneker Park, the Kennedy Center and surrounding areas, and the East Street Northwest Corridor. I'll note regarding the boundary and the relationship between the downtown Monumental Core and surrounding city, the Commission of Fine Arts commented that major axial and diagonal roadways should emphasize continuity beyond the boundary and that the boundary edge may suggest locations of significant thresholds. Our work includes two parts, inside and outside the boundary. Inside the boundary, the interagency working group is developing a new Streetscape Guide and updating the current manual. And outside the boundary, we signed a MOU with District Department of Transportation and DC Office of Planning. This coordination is important for developing guidance for key streets that transition between federal and local areas, and this work will be packaged into the companion Streetscape Review Guide. Overall, the Streetscape Framework and Lighting Policy strengthens Streetscape consistency, reinforces unique precincts, and improves connections and relationships between the downtown Monumental Core and surrounding local areas. Streetscape Treatments. Now I'll present the Streetscape Design Guidelines for Vertical and Surface Elements. The Streetscape Guide and Manual includes many different components within the Streetscape as shown here. And as a reminder, the Streetscape Framework categorizes these into vertical, surface, and small-scale elements and organizes them along a spectrum of consistency dependent on street category. Generally, most consistency is desired at the top among the vertical and surface elements, which shape Streetscape corridors, frame vistas, and inform character. Generally, more variability is permitted at the bottom among small-scale elements which reinforce our career and neighborhood identity. These principles coordinate with the Urban Design Streetscape Framework's street categories to develop high and moderate Streetscape consistency on radiating and edging and connecting and traversing streets. Today, we'll focus on the Vertical and Surface Element Guidelines and briefly discuss our next steps on small-scale elements. First, I'll present the vertical elements. These are highlighted yellow and include streetlights and trees, which shape Streetscape corridors and frame vistas. I'll begin with the streetlight guidelines. Streetlights are important because they express the framework of the capital city and provide nighttime illumination for safety as well as ambiance and character. And we've organized the guidelines into the bulleted topics listed here. I'll note the following guidelines focus on streetlight fixture types, not the quality of light emitted from the streetlights. Lighting quality was broadly addressed in the lighting policy. And as a reminder, the commission commented favorably on the lighting policy and directed staff to use this to inform any future amendments to the Streetscape Manual's streetlight specifications and our coordination with the District Smart Street Lighting Project, which focuses on converting all of the city's streetlights to LED. The current Streetscape Manual specifies Washington Globes, which are found throughout the city, and Olmstead Lights located exclusively on the mall. Our work documents a more diverse streetlight fixture palette and the existing range of pole heights. These height details will be necessary to update the streetlight specifications in the future. We also expanded the streetlight palette to include existing special streetlight fixtures. For example, the Pennsylvania Avenue tiered suite of lights. And we worked with federal and local partners to develop the proposed guidance, which adds details, including the fixture heights and spatial configurations. And I'll call your attention to the orange dots on the mall that indicate potential future crosswalk lighting fixtures, which I'll discuss next. To further the city's Vision Zero goals and to address concerns about inadequate lighting on the National Mall, we developed recommendations to improve mall panel crosswalk lighting. We worked with federal and local partners to develop recommendations that balance pedestrian safety and historic preservation, maintaining the dimly lit character of the nighttime east-west vista along the mall's center panel. In summary, guidelines support streetlight fixtures that unify city streets, express the dignity of the federal city, highlight unique areas, and achieve a consistent palette on the National Mall while improving crosswalk lighting. Next, I'll discuss the tree guidelines. Trees are important because they frame vistas to important structures and open spaces and provide an array of environmental benefits. We've organized the guidelines into the bulleted topics here, and I'll highlight a few. The current Streetscape Manual specifies disease-resistant American Elms on the streets shown here in dark blue. This guidance does not address contemporary trends in arboriculture, which call for species biodiversity and improve resilience to pests and disease. Our work focuses on the spatial quality of the tree canopy and how trees shape Streetscape character, view sheds, and vistas. In response to CFA's comments, we're broadening the tree palette, considering tree health and recognizing trees as a complex system of living organisms. To improve promote consistent tree forms and mature heights, to clearly frame view corridors to important structures and open spaces. Focusing on tree form rather than a species broadens the tree palette on many Monumental Core streets. This also minimizes the American Elm and similar trees to the mall, where historic preservation is of highest importance. To expand the tree canopy in the Monumental Core and achieve the city's objective of 40% canopy cover by 2032, we looked at historic tree plans that called for multiple rows of trees and developed guidance that encourages restoring a more robust canopy on these streets by working with federal and local partners and stakeholders. We also address tree box treatments. Current tree box protections have limited functionality for stormwater management and areas with high pedestrian foot traffic. To expand tree box functionality, improve visual consistency, and document existing conditions, including historic landscapes, the guidelines include buyer retention tree boxes and identify a suite of visually compatible tree box options based on Streetscape and landscape character and pedestrian volumes. In summary, guidelines support increasing tree canopy cover, selecting trees that reinforce and improve the pedestrian experience, improving biodiversity and tree health and enhancing human Next, I'll present the surface elements, which enhance vistas and inform Streetscape. These are highlighted in orange and include landscapes and plantings, stormwater management, pavements, and pedestrian circulation. First, I'll discuss the landscape and planting guidelines. Landscapes and plantings are important because they unify Streetscape character, enhance vistas, and provide environmental benefits. And we've organized the guidelines into the bulleted topics here, and I'll highlight a few. The current Streetscape Manual specifies a limited landscape and planting palette consisting of mulch tree plantings and turf grasses. To establish a unified vision, proposed guidance identifies landscape character based on land uses and settings, sidewalk configurations, and degree of vegetated and tree-planted open spaces. To enhance Streetscape vistas and improve ecosystem health and biodiversity, proposed guidance identifies vegetation heights, generally shorter heights on radiating and edging streets and taller heights on connecting and traversing streets, and supports a greater diversity of plantings to include native and pollinator-friendly plants. In summary, guidelines support enhancing Streetscape and landscape character and improving soils for healthy trees and vegetation and promoting native and pollinator-friendly plants. Next, I'll discuss the stormwater management guidelines. Stormwater management is important because it improves environmental quality, filters pollutants, and reduces strain on existing infrastructure. We've organized the guidelines into these bulleted topics, and I'll highlight a few. The current Streetscape basins and inlets, it does not provide guidance on current stormwater management best practices and techniques, including green infrastructure. Stormwater management guidelines respond to CFA's comments, which advise staff to consider contemporary environmental issues, such as the impact of extreme weather and localized flooding. Guidelines also expand on comprehensive plan policies and coordinate with federal and local stormwater regulations. To address contemporary environmental issues and incorporate current best management practices or BMPs, proposed guidance identifies appropriate locations for stormwater BMPs based on urban design considerations. BMPs are largely encouraged and only limited in certain areas for visual, historic preservation, or functional reasons. In summary, guidelines support using BMPs to address flooding and water quality issues and to meet federal and local standards and regulations, protecting historic and cultural resources and aesthetic character, and ensuring proper stormwater facility maintenance. Next, I'll discuss the pavement guidelines. Pavement is important because it conveys Streetscape character and facilitates circulation. We've organized these guidelines into these bulleted topics, and again, I'll highlight a few. The current aggregates sidewalk pavement and curb and gutter types in our area. Our work focuses on unifying pavement character, recognizing special areas, considering transitions on and off the mall, and addressing environmental issues. To address pavement character, proposed guidance carries forward the intent to use exposed aggregate on many Monumental Core streets. It identifies where custom pavements highlight special and historic areas and reflects a more diverse palette that exists today. In summary, guidelines support unifying Monumental Core pavement material transitions and joints, and improving stormwater management and mitigating heat island effect. Next, I'll discuss the pedestrian circulation guidelines. These guidelines are important because they inform the space needed for comfortable and inviting pedestrian circulation. We've organized these guidelines into these bulleted topics, and I'll highlight a few. The current Streetscape Manual addresses roadway classifications and identifies pedestrian ways, but it does not provide guidance on minimum space needed for pedestrians or how other modes interact with pedestrian space. By comparison, the district has guidance for sidewalk widths and space needed for pedestrian circulation. Additionally, since pedestrians, as well as bicycles and other micro-mobility modes, such as Docla scooters, use the multi-use trails on the National Mall, more guidance is needed regarding how other modes interact with pedestrian space. To address space needed for pedestrians and better convey how these spaces are utilized, proposed guidance identifies minimum Proposed Guidance identifies minimum widths for sidewalks and pedestrian clear zones and identifies designated multi-use trails and restricted access roads. Our guidance focuses on pedestrian circulation, not transportation or curbside management, but our guidance does address how pedestrians and bicycle scooters and other micro-mobility modes interact on sidewalks, pedestrian paths, and multi-use trails. And this guidance is coordinated with federal and local plans and regulations. In summary, guidelines support enhancing circulation for safe, comfortable, and enjoyable pedestrian movement, providing access to unique destinations and events, ensuring consistent alignment and adequate size of pedestrian space, and coordinating pedestrian spaces with other Streetscape zones and travel modes. In summary, the vertical and surface elements guide Streetscape design, character, and physical quality, including the placement configuration and type of Streetscape elements. And here are some examples of how our guidance comes together in an illustrative street section. This is a radiating and edging street example of Constitution Avenue Northwest, showing the double row of vase or spreading shaped trees, twin-twenty streetlight plantings and surface materials. And this is a connecting and traversing street example of 12th Street Southwest, showing the single row of round-shaped trees and Washington Globe Lights. Now, I'll discuss our current work and next steps, which are to continue guideline development for small-scale elements, initiate the construction manual update, and advance collaboration with the city on the Companion Streetscape Review Guide. As a reminder, the Streetscape Framework Guides identifies the importance of Streetscape consistency across character areas, which have their own unique identity and are shown here in color. As we develop small-scale element guidelines, we'll identify elements within the right-of-way that are important for supporting Streetscape consistency and unique character area identity. We'll address furnishings and civic infrastructure. For furnishings, such as benches and trash receptacles, we'll focus on updating these elements to meet current needs and standards. And for civic infrastructures, such as fire hydrants and drinking fountains, we'll focus on addressing current technologies, such as car charging stations. And I'll note that the Small-Scale Element Guidelines will inventory existing perimeter security, but will not specify or prescribe perimeter security elements or designs. As we update the construction manual, we'll begin with pavements for roadway, curb and gutter, and sidewalks. And in the future, we'll update the federal LED streetlight specifications in coordination with D Dot Smart Street Lighting Project. As mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, our work is broken into two parts, inside and outside the Streetscape Guide and Manual Boundary. Outside the boundary, we're working with the district to develop the Companion Streetscape Review Guide for key streets that transition between federal and local areas. We're currently developing pilot Streetscape guidelines for 3rd Street, 16th Street Northwest, north of the White House, South Capitol Street, and Massachusetts Avenue. And we're meeting with stakeholders this month to seek their input on draft guidelines. In conclusion, the Monumental Core has beautiful, inviting, and functional consistently achieved this level of quality. The new Streetscape Guide and Manual will be used to achieve Streetscape consistency across jurisdictions from inter-NCPC and CFA staff review. It is the Executive Director's recommendation that the Commission authorizes the release of the Vertical and Surface Element Guidelines for a 90-day public comment period, commends the inter-agency working group's collaborative efforts, supports the boundary additions, finds that the guidelines build upon the Streetscape Framework, and notes the importance of using the Framework principles to inform the guidelines. Notes that the guideline principles are important and directs staff to use the guidelines to inform the construction manual update, and encourages the working group to use the draft guidelines to inform projects. Regarding the Companion Streetscape Review Guide, the Commission notes NCPC's collaboration with the district finds that this work is important for improving Streetscape transitions between the Monumental Core and local neighborhoods, and reinforces CFA's comments regarding the relationship between the Monumental Core and surrounding city. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Dalker. Do any of the commissioners have questions?
I have a question. So, in reviewing the draft that was sent, or the EDR that was sent over, I noticed safety is mentioned a few times, but it seems like it's more like pedestrian safety, but it's more in the context of like, streetlights at intersections. So, is there like, discussion in here or in the accompanying manuals that eventually come out of design for pedestrian safety, especially in the Monumental Core?
No. So, what you saw in the improvements, that's where we've been made aware that there are some issues with regards to nighttime visibility of pedestrians in the crosswalks. And then, as it relates, as your comment relates to the pedestrian circulation guidelines, again, we're really relying on federal and local transportation plans to target those issues and coordinating where we can.
Great, thanks. I'll have a few more comments, but that's very helpful.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Dalker?
Just a quick question.
Ms. Goster, is that you speaking?
It is. One, Megan, if you could take your PowerPoint presentation down. And I just wanted to note, we've been having a little bit of audio delay with your presentation. So, you may want to go off, as much as we like seeing you, you may want to go off camera to see if that helps with the sound quality a little bit.
Thank you. That's a very helpful suggestion. Commissioner Wright, you had a question?
I do, and I should know the answer, but I don't. Does the manual, or will the manual include maintenance? And, you know, like, recommendations for consistent checks on, once the Streetscapes are installed? It's not in the, probably in the purview of the manual, but some mention of it might be a good thing.
Ms. Dalker?
Yes, thank you for the question. So, the current manual includes limited maintenance section primarily for maintaining trees. This is something that we've discussed at length with the working group. We are including a maintenance section specifically for the stormwater, since those facilities in particular do require
these low-impact developments at first, some of them have been less than successful. And unless they're checked, you know, often, and especially for new installations, it's important to make sure that they work because we have a tendency to just, you know, finish the work and move on to the next project. So, some kind of, some kind of section on that, however brief, would be a good thing.
That's a great suggestion. I think it relates directly to the safety question for pedestrians as well. So, thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, I will Oops, sorry, Commissioner Dixon. Commissioner Dixon?
I wondered whether there was any Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I'm gonna I wonder whether there was any discussion in here about the 5G that the district is planning to, I think, make part of its installation of lights? And also whether the maintenance issue is there also? If that does happen, will these carriers be responsible for maintaining their 5G equipment if they are going to be included in the lighting process?
Another good question, Ms. Dalker.
Yes, thank you. We are including the small cell and antennas into the topic of civic infrastructure. So, that is something that we'll advance in our next phase of work. And then
Yeah, I just want to be sure. I just want to be sure that the maintenance that Commissioner Wright brought up also connects to this because carriers get in, they do something, and maybe they don't have a success, and then they leave the gear. And it's kind of like the cables that hang all around our streets because they don't want to take them down once people disconnect their TVs or their cable.
Right, and we will be just wanted to note that.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Dalker before we move to discussion? If not, I will start with Commissioner May and then go in round-robin format. Please keep your webcams on during the discussion. Commissioner May?
Thank you. I'm glad they turned my camera back on. I'm not sure what, why it went off. Anyway. So, I appreciate the briefing. I also appreciate the fact that staff reached out and gave me a bit of a pre-brief on this, given the extensive park service interests that are involved. So, I don't really have any any specific comments. I would just say that this is a very important, if often overlooked, document. And it is something that, you know, all federal agencies should be looking to as we as we continue to maintain the nation's capital in the condition that we want it to be. And I think that it's also the sort of thing that isn't really that noticeable to most people, right? They don't really see and understand how much thought goes into things like light fixtures or park benches or what have you in the Streetscape. And I think that's the reason why it goes unnoticed is that it's all very good. I mean, it's not perfect. There's certainly lots of room for improvement. But I think that the fact that we had this manual before and that we will continue to have these guidelines and the manual, and there will be further instructions, if you will, coming from it will help guide the development and maintenance of the Streetscape for a long time to come. Not sure how soon we'll have to revisit it. And there are some concerning things that are out there, like small cell technology. But optimistic that it's not a good course. This is sort of a good basic guidebook for how we operate the properties of the property. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
And there we are. I don't have any particular questions or comments. I thought it was a very comprehensive presentation. Actually, made me start thinking about some things that I didn't even know were in the purview of the work that we're doing. And I think that's it. I don't have any specific comments on the recommendations, but appreciate the comprehensiveness of the work that the staff is doing on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I don't, whoops, I don't have any further comment. We've looked at this several times, but thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Yeah, I also am very excited about this. Particularly happy that the city's plan, and I'm assuming our effort too, will allow the monitoring of lights that don't work, and therefore, they hopefully will be fixed and work. Because in certain neighborhoods, in my community, lighting is very important to safety. There was a time when the police department would keep records of lights being out so that the PEPCO, whoever could, turn them back on again or fix them. That dropped, and it was sort of up to the community to do this. And I spent many a night out wrapping yellow ribbons around holes and asking the city to come in and correct them. And this will eliminate that need, and it's very important. It's a safety issue. And I'm glad that this will hopefully address that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Thanks so much. So, as I alluded to earlier, I think that pedestrian safety has been an increasing concern in the district. The mayor has our Vision Zero goals and everything going around with that. There's been a lot of work on kind of the non-federal streets in DC to either put up bollards or to reconfigure roads to reduce the lanes, to slow the cars down. And some of that's been more effective than others. But I just think that in moving this work forward into looking at the design manual, maybe we think about some trends that have been going on. I mean, there was some talk in the presentation about the possible lighting that was mentioned earlier at certain pedestrian crosswalks. But I think there's other things that can be considered in translating this over just to have more of an emphasis on safety. So, I never thought that I'd say anything good about the design of La Fan Plaza. But I will say it's the only federal area that I know of that actually has raised crosswalks at several of the intersections that keep the sidewalk at the pedestrian level and cause the cars to slow down a little bit to go over those speedhogs. So, I think that to the extent in down here in the downtown core, things like the bike lanes on Pennsylvania Avenue have probably made things a bit safer in many ways because it slows the traffic down by taking some of those extra lanes away. And despite that, there have still been some fatal accidents along Pennsylvania Avenue with buses taking turns too fast. So, I think that just kind of maybe have more of an emphasis on ways that the design downtown can work to make it a better pedestrian experience, especially down around the Mall. Maybe we should be putting some speed tables where the National Mall crosses over was at 7th and 9th Street down there. So, I just encourage you, as we're taking these principles forward into actual design manuals, to think about whatever we can do, especially in the pedestrian-heavy downtown area where we have a lot of tourists that don't necessarily know how DC traffic can work. So, but I want to thank you for the presentation. I think there's a lot of good updates and a kind of an emphasis on just good design quality downtown. So, I'd like to thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thanks for the presentation. No further comments from me.
Commissioner Ginsburg?
Also, thank you so much for a really robust presentation, but I don't have any questions. Thanks.
Commissioner Stein-Gesser?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'd like to agree with my fellow Commissioner Cash on his emphasis and elevation of the safety issues. I think that's very important. I also want to, as it says in the Executive Director's report, commend the interagency work. I mean, the work that's gone into this and the simplicity of its presentation and ability to understand what it's doing is very impressive, and I really appreciate that. I noticed there was one comment on there, and I think it said, "Note that the following things are important for," but you could just stop after the word "important" because all the elements of this document in how they treat the federal corps and then how it expands out in to the local city, I think are, they're very important, and they're very, it's a very successful document. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon?
Good presentation, good effort, and I had no other comments. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the thoughtful comments from all of the commissioners. I do think it's a really great opportunity as we move into the public comment period to really solicit feedback. I agree. It's a really comprehensive effort. I think there's more that all of us can do in furthering the conversation around safety, traffic calming, lighting. The Vision Zero effort, I think, has captured people's imagination that helped them think about Streetscape. And I appreciate what Commissioner May said about our nation's capital. And the Streetscape is actually quite good, but we have to be vigilant to make sure it stays that way. And the comments around maintenance and trying to encourage folks who are actually negotiating with the private companies, building in those safeguards for making sure that things aren't left behind. So, it's all really thoughtful, important work. And I appreciate the interagency working group's collaborative efforts to develop the draft Streetscape Design Guidelines. On behalf of the Commission, I'd like to thank all of the agencies for their work together to update the Streetscape Manual, including GS their work together to update the streetscape manual, including GSA, the Park Service, and the district. And I'd also like to thank the District Department of Transportation and Office of Planning for their collaboration on a companion streetscape guide for axial and radial city streets with important relationships to the Monumental Corps, echoing Commissioner Steingasser's comments in that regard. And I do want to stress that this work is really important for unifying and achieving consistency on our streets within the downtown Monumental Corps and connecting physically and visually with our national buildings, important monuments, our open spaces, but as well as the surrounding local neighborhoods and the rest of the city. So with that, is there a motion to authorize public release of the streetscape guidelines?
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioner McMahon. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dixon seconded. Ms. Custer, can you please confirm the motion and the second and take the vote by roll call?
Certainly. Commissioner McMahon made the motion. Commissioner Dixon provided the second. And with that, Commissioner Steingasser?
Yes.
Commissioner McMahon?
Yes.
Commissioner May?
Yes.
Commissioner Argo?
Yes.
Chair White?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright? Yes. Commissioner Dixon?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Abstain.
And Commissioner Ginsburg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion has carried. Thank you, Ms. Dalker, for your great work on this and all the team who've worked on it. Next is Agenda Item 7A, an information presentation regarding the Federal Capital Improvements Program. And today, we welcome Mr. Smith. Good afternoon.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair White and commission members. Today, I will provide an information presentation on the updates to the Federal Capital Improvements Program, or FCIP for short. During today's discussion, first, I will broadly touch on the FCIP, the enabling legislation and legal framework and requirements, and how the FCIP is used by our agency, how capital improvement is defined by our agency, as well as financial reporting requirements for projects. And lastly, the FCIP process and scorecard. Next, I will discuss project submission changes that have occurred as part of this year's program to address new NCPC and administration policies. And lastly, I will close by highlighting next steps going forward for the program. One of NCPC's core activities under the Planning Act is to prepare the FCIP, which is a six-year program of federal capital improvement projects for the national capital region. NCPC uses the FCIP as a planning tool to help guide planning and development in the region and evaluates each proposed federal capital project for conformance to NCPC plans and policies. FCIP can be seen as an outlook of capital projects within the national capital region over the next six years. Each year, we submit the six-year program with planning and funding recommendations to the Office of Management and Budget for use in its preparation of the president's annual budget. I would like to note, because of OMB Circular Number A-11 regarding pre-decisional information on budget matters, the FCIP report that is submitted to OMB is reviewed in the executive session of the commission. In the fall, the FCIP funded report, which is composed of projects that have been approved and received funding within the president's budget in the previous fiscal year, is released to the public. To give the commission an understanding of the reason why you may see the types of projects that you have historically seen during the executive session, I wanted to provide an overview of what we have defined as a capital improvement project that will be required to be submitted for FCIP review. A capital improvement includes acquisition of buildings and lands, construction of new buildings and structures or additions or major alterations of existing buildings and structures. This excludes ordinary repair maintenance, such as replacement of HVAC units or paving roads. A capital improvement may include the acquisition of fixed assets, construction of streets, highways, or bridges, transportation infrastructure, and major utilities, major site improvements, including perimeter security and landscaping projects, fences, and remediation projects. I wish to note that a capital improvement project is not defined by the source of funding for projects. A project that receives donations or receives internal sources of funding other than appropriated funding from the president's budget may still be considered a capital improvement project. The cost to fund a capital improvement should be calculated based on its full life cycle costs, including all direct and indirect costs for planning, design, and construction of the project. Just as a reminder about last year's program that you saw, we had 37 projects that received funding in fiscal year 2021. The total cost was approximately $756 million. The largest funded project in the last fiscal year was the National Institute of Health Surgery Radiology Laboratory Medicine Building, as a mouthful, which topped at $229 million. To prepare the annual FCIP report, federal agencies submit to NCPC a copy of the advanced program of capital improvements for the upcoming six years. This year's program includes projects with funding requests for fiscal years 2023 through 2028. The FCIP process is composed of two data calls, the initial and the second, which are timed to give NCPC staff and agency representatives ample opportunity to submit and review capital improvement projects prior to finalizing the report. The FCIP process ends in July, when the final FCIP report that is submitted to OMB is reviewed by the commission at the July meeting. Following that meeting, recommendations are forwarded to OMB. In September, following the release of the president's budget, NCPC releases the FCIP funded report to our website, which provides details on projects that were funded within the president's budget that particular fiscal year. Just to go over the scorecard, NCPC uses the FCIP project scorecard to evaluate the project's consistency with policies in the federal elements, NCPC-approved master plans, site and building plans, and other plans and policies. The projects are evaluated with its consistency to each category and scored a green, yellow, red, or not applicable rating, and then given an overall rating. Projects with an overall green rating are generally consistent with NCPC's policies and plans. Yellow ratings are often for projects that need additional information to determine consistency with plans and policies or impacts associated with that project. And commonly, many of these projects are at the earlier stages or concept stage of planning, and they do not have all the information fully ascertained to be able to score the project as a green. A red rating means often a project has major inconsistencies with agency plans and policies, or there are unresolved adverse impacts. So there are a couple of changes that have been made to the FCIP submission and review process for this year's cycle. The most pronounced change was the inclusion of additional questions to ask applicant agencies how they are mitigating climate risks and advancing equity and support for underserved communities. Last year, the commission was presented with the finalized Climate Action Plan and an overview of the agency's Equity Action Plan. As discussed last year during their respective presentations, these plans seek to advance the goals and policies as outlined in Executive Order 14008 in the case of climate change and Executive Order 13985 in the case of equity. Within the Climate Action Plan, the FCIP was identified as a tool that can be enhanced to help applicant agencies identify climate opportunities and challenges and to work with them to meet NCPC and federal goals for sustainability, adaptation, and resiliency planning. In the case of the Equity Action Plan, the FCIP was identified as a useful tool to engage with federal applicant agencies on how their capital improvement projects may impact underserved communities and discuss ways and how to reduce potential disparities and eliminate barriers. The questions that were created attempt to advance goals of both of these action plans. Under the Planning Act, the final customer for the FCIP report is the Office of Management and Budget, which uses the FCIP for its budget considerations. As OMB views the FCIP solicitation process as a key source of information to gauge how applicant agencies are complying with the executive orders, NCPC staff worked with OMB to draft and finalize the questions for inclusion in this year's FCIP submission process. I will note that these questions are required fields and must be completed by applicant agencies prior to submission of any project for FCIP review. So to discuss the climate change questions, they are again informed by both Climate Action Plan and Executive Order 14008. The questions are arranged into six different categories within the board. The first category asks if a project is incorporating renewable energy resources into its design. The questions or the types of energy sources range from solar panels, wind, geothermal, biomass, biogas, or low-impact hydropower, or if the project is meeting net zero energy principles. The second category seeks to understand if a project is implementing water conservation measures by incorporating applicable technology and equipment into their plans and design of the project. Another question to applicants is on how the project may reduce stormwater runoff and contain that runoff on-site. The third category of questions seeks to understand how a project may reduce greenhouse gas emissions, including net zero emissions principles such as retrofits, if it's for a renovation project, or incorporation of new technology for new construction projects. The fourth category asks if the project would meet green building design standards and would allow applicants to explain the building standard chosen and ways it would achieve that certification. The fifth category is related to how a project would be cited to minimize land disturbance. This category of questions is on how a project may disturb forest lands or wetlands within the project's boundaries at an existing site, or how a project may adaptively reuse land at installation to mitigate greenfield development. The final category asks applicant agencies questions on how a project is designed, considers potential hazards and threats related to climate change, such as sea level rise, nuisance flooding, as you see in the graphic here along Constitution Avenue in front of the mark, or failing infrastructure in ways that they are incorporating resilient practices to reduce environmental hazards. Moving to the equity questions. The equity questions are informed by the first question within that section. Is your project located within or adjacent to an equity emphasis area as defined by the Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments, or COG? As illustrated here is a map of the equity emphasis areas, which was presented to you by COG at your January public hearing. Since its tracks within the region that are considered equity emphasis areas are labeled in orange. We then overlay that map with the major federal installations within the national capital region, which are labeled in gray. Using this locational question as a basis, the questions then are categorized into four additional categories. Impacts on underserved communities, which seeks to understand if a project would have impacts within the community that is located, where is located that may relate to traffic, access to the facility within the community, or the question is, does it cut off access within the community, create barriers, or impacts natural and cultural resources within the community. Next, we seek to understand how a project's design may provide access to all people. This includes how the project is designed against its physical security elements, including fence and gate placement and interior design of the site, and if the project accommodates multimodal transportation opportunities and the project's physical interconnectivity within the surrounding community. The next category is to understand how a project would promote economic development within the community in a myriad of ways, such as would the project create a positive investment within these communities by allowing the support of local businesses, or is designed in a manner that would permit employees to readily support goods and services around the site. Lastly, we seek to understand an agency's plans for community engagement and outreach with underserved communities adjacent to the project site, and ask them to detail the method of that outreach. In closing, I wish to highlight next steps going forward for this year's program and beyond as it relates to the new submission questions. We understand that many agencies are also beginning to address how their projects may be impacted by these orders. NCPC is proposing a phased approach in how these questions may be used to evaluate and issue scores for projects. The first phase will occur with this FCIP cycle, with answers to these questions being used as supplemental information for projects but would not formally factor into a project's scorecard. We will then present the full FCIP report to you in executive session on July 7. Following the end of this year's FCIP cycle, NCPC will reevaluate questions at the receiving feedback from agency representatives and also engaging with you as a commission on these questions, as well as our OMB partners, following this year's cycle. We will then refine those questions prior to the next FCIP cycle in December of 2022. The second phase will start when next fiscal year's cycle begins this upcoming December, as responses will be used to evaluate and score a project formally within the scorecard. This concludes my presentation, and I stand by for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I particularly appreciated the slides with the very clear set of questions for how people will respond to the executive orders. So I thought that was great clarity for everyone. Do any of the commissioners have any general questions for Mr. Smith?
Hearing none. I will now open it up to the commission for discussion, starting with Commissioner Wright, and then we'll go round robin. Please keep your webcams on for the discussion. Commissioner Wright?
Oh, I wish you hadn't started with me.
I'm sorry. Would you like for me to?
No, no, because I don't have anything, you know. This is always a struggle for us at GSA because of the timing of the thing. And so I would just like to say, we're sorry, Krishan, that we can't seem to get it together on the first ask, but we are trying hard. I have no questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
No comments. Good presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cash?
No comments or questions. But yeah, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Thanks for the presentation. Also, no comments from me. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Steingasser?
Same. Appreciate the presentation. No comments or questions. Thank you.
Commissioner McMahon?
No, thank you. I have no questions or comments.
Commissioner May? Sorry, I'm going a little out of order here.
I started talking with my microphone off. Thanks for the update, and nice to see you, Krishan, in a different setting, which we often at the horizontal adjustment.
Commissioner Ginsburg? I'm sorry, I went out of order there.
No problem. Thank you for the presentation, but no questions or comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Argo?
Thank you also for the presentation. Very comprehensive, very well done, I thought, and extremely useful. Thank you. No comments or questions at this time.
Thank you. And Commissioner McMahon, did, I want to make sure I called on you.
You did, and I still have no questions or comments.
Thank you. I don't understand my own notes today. I'm so sorry. Commissioner Steingasser? Any further comments, or I just saw your image there.
Yeah. I really liked.
Well, thanks, everyone. I'm sorry I dropped my piece of paper there where I was keeping my check marks. I apologize. But with that agenda item, our open session agenda is concluded. We will meet next at a special session on Wednesday, February 16, at 10:00 a.m., where we will have a presentation on the Pennsylvania Avenue. where we will have a presentation on the Pennsylvania Avenue Initiative. Our next regular commission meeting will be on Thursday, March 3, 2022, at 1:00 p.m. Eastern Time. If there is no other business, the open session is now adjourned. Thank you, everyone.